I call this meeting in the Upsher County Commission Order. We will begin the mode of silent meditation and prayer following the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Jackie, please read the minutes from our September 24th Commission hearing or meeting.
Good morning. The County Commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held a special meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, September 24, 2015, at 10:45 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. Present were J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Carrie Cutwright, Commissioner, Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, and Carolyn Dicklocker, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of September 17, 2015, as submitted. Robert Branduski did not appear for his 11 o'clock a.m. appointment regarding first responder concerns in Almore and will be rescheduled to appear at a future meeting. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign an agreement between Menard Consulting, Incorporated and the Upsher County Commission for services in connection with governmental accounting standards board 45 financial reporting requirements in the amount of $1,900 for fiscal year 2015 valuation. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the employer mandate reporting services contract with M.D.Q. Consulting, LLC, to prepare and file Form 1094-DSC and Form 1095-C-S with the IRS on behalf of the Upsher County Commission and to provide electronic file of the appropriate form 1095-C-S to the Upsher County Commission for distribution to employees. The total estimated cost for 2015 is $3,250. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the grant application and related documents with the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority in the amount of $101,614 for the repair and/or replacement of the roof surrounding the courthouse dome. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved the change of employment status of Jerry Lewis from part-time case aide to full-time case aide at his current rate of $10.07 per hour effective September 14, 2015, as requested by Raleigh Rollinson, project director slash home confinement supervisor of the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections. J.C. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from Joyce Harris Thacker advising of the employment of Lori Aldrich Harvey as part-time Upsher County Family Resource Director effective September 28, 2015. Ms. Harris Thacker is requesting that the Upsher County Commission continue to administer payroll accounts for the FRN Director's position at the rate of $19.50 per hour for 19.5 hours per week, with reimbursement to be made to the Commission from the WBDHHR Bureau of Children and Families/FRN grant on a quarterly basis. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Ms. Harris Thacker's request. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the job posting slash advertisement for the position of full-time and/or part-time E-911 telecommunicator. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. One, correspondence from Jeffrey Fleck, Executive Director of the State of West Virginia Consolidated Public Retirement Board, providing a preliminary estimate of the employer contribution rate in order to assist the budgeting process. The estimated employer contribution percentage will increase from 13.5% to 14.5% effective July 1, 2016. Once the official contribution rate is determined, the letter will be sent to the Upsher County Commission. Two, correspondence from Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator to public service district members regarding the vacancy on the Source Water Protection Committee. The Source Water Protection Committee meetings are held on the first Monday of each month at 3:30 p.m. at City Hall at Buchanan. Three, correspondence from Joe Scarborough, Supervisor, Office of Land and Streams, Division of Natural Resources, granting the Upsher County Commission for a period of one year a right-of-entry for the purpose of constructing a 10-foot, 560-foot stream access ramp along the Buchanan River, Buchanan District, Upsher County, West Virginia. Four, correspondence from Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, to Dr. Stanka, Principal of Union Elementary School, providing the students with an update regarding their request for the installation of traffic signal at the intersection of Isling Mill Road and Route 33 in Upsher County, West Virginia. Four, correspondence from Jacob Reeger, Judge of the 26th Judicial Circuit, apprising Upsher County Commission of Concerns he received regarding the accessibility of the courtroom and the need to ensure compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Four, Louis Upsher Home Control Facility Adoption Financial Transactions, August 1, 2015 through August 31, 2015. Seven, Upsher County E-911 Communication Center reports as listed. Eight, statewide transportation improvement program, FFY 2014 through 2019 program amendment. Nine, agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed, 10 meeting minutes as listed, 11 meetings as listed, 12 appointments made to draw from as listed. Craig Presar, WBU Extension Service Representative, appeared before, appeared with C.E.O.'s representatives and read the Breast Cancer Awareness Day and Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation, which designates October 5, 2015 as Breast Cancer Awareness Day and October 2015 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Upsher County. The proclamation encourages women to engage in periodic screening for early detection. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign proclamation. Mr. Presar announced that there will be an event held at Jawbone Park at 11 o'clock on October 5. Local doctors will provide information on self-exams and screening, and breast cancer survivors will be recognized. A light launching cape will be served. The Commission recessed at 11:25 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 11:30 a.m. Bill Burns, Take Communications LLC representative, appeared before the Commission, provided information on the Univerge SB 9100, communication server telephone system for the E-911 Communication Center. Take Communications LLC has submitted a quote in the amount of $14,864.26 plus sales tax. The server will replace the current outdated system for which parts are no longer available. The quote includes Office of Emergency Management phone system. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved the quote for the new telecommunications system. Debbie Anderson, Human Resource Development Foundation, Incorporated, representative, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of the services the foundation provides. Ms. Anderson advised that the National Dislocated Worker Grant has provided funds to employ and train individuals for string cleanup throughout 16 counties across the state, including Upsher County. Ms. Anderson is seeking assistance from the Commission in determining areas in Upsher County in need of cleanup. The Commission provided several recommendations and agencies for referral. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following refinations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following request to attend the meetings as listed. Carrie Wallace reviewed two road name request applications. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved road names Mogirl Court and Call Lane for private driveways located off the Smith Avenue. With no further business, on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission adjourned at 1:35 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. I note on page one down at the bottom of the first page under item number one, that should read the West Virginia Consolidated, at a D, State Consolidation Consolidated Public Retirement Board. Other than that, are there any additions or amendments to the minute says read?
On page three, I would ask that we remove the plus sales tax on that quote because we are taxing, so we chart on sales.
Page three, where's it located?
Page three, the quote from Take Communications.
Additional amendments or additions to the notes? If not, that request a motion to approve the minutes?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome, everyone. We have an agenda today, our appointments. 9:15, we have Carolyn Prozier, Region Elizabeth Zane Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, presentation proclamation honoring the Daughters of American Revolution's 125 years of service to America. At 9:30, we have Addie Helmuth with Women's Aid in Crisis, a presentation proclamation declaring the month of October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. At 1:30, we have a tour of the courthouse campus with Rock Cave Elementary School students. We're a campus now, okay. And at 4 o'clock, we have a tour of the courthouse campus with Upsher County Homeschool students, which we participated in this last year with, I think it was Union District School?
It was Academy.
Academy. And it was a very enjoyable event, and I'm certain we'll enjoy doing that again with students this afternoon. It's now about 13 minutes after the hour, so we'll do it for a couple minutes until 9:15, 20 will deal with items for discussion, action, or approval. Number one, we have recommendation to overrule Thomas Harris's objection to the probate assets filed September 17, 2015 by Deanna Saba-Rite Esquire, fiduciary commission. Approval of order overruling objection in regards to the estate of Shirley J. Hamner, deceased. And if you review that communication, that lists a number of issues, historical background on this individual matter, and the recommendation was made to overrule his objections to the estate. So is there a motion to follow the fiduciary commission's Deanna Saba-Rite's recommendation?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Kristen Bregga requesting the use of the Upsher County Commission meeting room on October 19, 2015, from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock p.m., 10 o'clock a.m. to 2 o'clock p.m., for a Sam's Club membership drive. And there's a flyer attached in the agenda outlining the information that she'll be presenting to our employees for their consideration. Is there a motion to approve the use of the court? If not, that request is denied. Okay. Next, we have approval of master plan document amended number five, amending the Upsher County Commission Employee Medical Benefits Plan, revising the scheduled benefits, approval of employee health reimbursement plan, amendment number one, that is revising the H.R.A. maximum annual contribution, the health reimbursement benefits, and maximum benefits, approval of revised benefits for coverage beginning on or after July 1, 2015. Would you please comment for the record, Ms. Wallace?
Yes. There are a number of changes this amendment includes. One, act rays will be covered in network no matter where the service is provided, whether it be at your physician's office or at a hospital that you've been referred to. All prenatal care will be covered at 100% deductible waived. Currently, our SBC states that all prenatal care is covered, however, our plan document states that only office visits are covered. Non-network preventative care will be covered at a deductible and 60%, which is standard for most plans. And then your last change relates to the H.R.A. Previously, you had an out-of-pocket maximum of $12,000 for families, and it was $7,000 for single. Up to the $5,000, you covered 80% less than deductible, and then the remaining $2,000 was 80% the employee's responsibility and 20% the commission's responsibility. We have changed that to be 80% all the way through commission responsibility and 20% to the employee.
And in fact, basically, we're enhancing the benefits to our county employees under that?
That's correct, yes.
Is there a motion to approve that document?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's now a little bit past 9:15, I'm sorry for the delay, but we'll now have Representative Carolyn Prozier, and I presume other representatives from the Zane, Elizabeth Zane Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution, to present a proclamation. Do you wish to read the proclamation?
I can do that.
So you can take the paper? Never stand in the way of the D.A.R.
That's right. This is proclamation. Can we have a copy?
We have a copy. I guess we have the original, is that the original?
Whereas October 11, 2015 marks 125th anniversary of the founding of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, to honor the memory and spirit of men and women who achieved American independence, and whereas nearly 1 million members have since fulfilled this vibrant service organization's mission to promote historic preservation, education, and patriotism. And whereas Daughters are currently celebrating both their founding and their future for providing 10 million hours of service to America, and whereas the Elizabeth Zane Chapter of the D.A.R. was founded in Buchanan, West Virginia in 1902, and is currently the third oldest chapter in the state to carry on this important service on the local level, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the vital organization and its memorable anniversary, now therefore I, J.C. Rafferty, by virtue of the authority vested in me as President of the Upsher County Commission, do hereby honor the Daughters of the American Revolution's 125th years of service to America, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of our nation's founders and to honor and respect the freedoms guaranteed to us through the Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution.
Thank you. Especially the last paragraph, the last paragraph at the end of that. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And a few labels are likely to come up. Our next appointment is at 9:30, so we'll continue with our items for discussion, action, or approval. It's number four. I'll wait till Carrie gets carried. And I would guess that you're from West Virginia, Westland. I'm a prime investigator, I see this sweatshirt. But I suspect you have a class that probably was requiring you to attend County Commission?
Sorry.
Have a class of that there?
State Department of Government.
Very good. And any political science majors? That's what I have. And don't tell me, history minor?
Yeah.
And I'm just a major, I'm not a...
I'm an English minor.
Well, you go far. Or a sci is one of those, I hope you're not in teaching, because very rarely are the teaching jobs, probably sci. Going to law school? Very good. I didn't, but I think that's a good opportunity for you. We thank you, we welcome you here. We wish more, wouldn't be compelled to come, you're professors, but that people would take advantage of being involved in government. We have our regular attendees that do attend, but often many times, it's just the staff, the press, the videographer, videotographer? Videotographer? Yes.
Videographer?
Video, what is it?
Videographer?
Videographer, autographer? Okay. But we welcome you here. Will there be other students, or are you just the only two that are following the advice of the professor?
I'm not sure, but we just all come together.
You'll have to go down the street to the city as well, or just the county?
No, I'm at 7:00.
Very good. Okay, so number four on our list, approval of transitional resource, my focus on, approval of transitional insurance fee selection and addendum to administrative service agreement with EPO. The fee for EPO to handle the enrollment, notification, and payment process is $500 and $44 per participant. Purpose of the fee is to fund some of the mandated changes requiring group health plans to pay this fee/tax over three years, 214 through 260. I guess the question I would put to the administrator, and I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure, I think when it says mandated changes, these are with the Affordable Care Act.
That's correct. And this amount has decreased. Last year, your fee was 250, but it was $63 per participant, so it's going to be about $3,000 less this year than it was last year.
Can't be assumed it'll go down next year, or is that, we don't want to disappoint? Very well, having heard that definition and understanding the request for approval, is there a motion to approve that request?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have the first reading of ordinance granting a renewal franchise to Sequel III Communications, II LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, doing business as Sutton Link Communications, to operate and maintain a cable system in the county of Upsher, West Virginia, and setting forth conditions accompanying the grant of franchise superseding all previous franchise ordinance to the County Commission of Upsher County. Okay. And as the first reading, there will be another reading?
There will be two more readings. Your second next Thursday, and your third and final will be on the third Thursday, which is the 15th.
And there is public comment period?
Yes, it will be posted in the record delta next Wednesday at the 7:00, and that will announce the final reading date.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll find my minutes. There are correspondence from Benny Naselrod requesting to be reappointed to sit on the Upsher County Enhanced Emergency Telephone Board for another three-year term effective July 1, 2015. Mr. Naselrod's term would expire June 30, 2018, and Mr. Naselrod is a former chief of the Adrian Volunteer Fire Department. So is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Naselrod to that board?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Tony C. Newman, announcing her resignation from a permanent part-time position with the county clerk's office effective October 3, 2015. Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
First, I would like to note that Tony has made an agreement with Ms. Debbie Thacker Wolfhorn, our county clerk, that she will fill in in the event that Jackie is unable to attend our meetings, and will be paid by the county clerk for her time spent taking your minutes.
She did that in absence when Jackie had surgery about a year ago or so.
Yes. So she will only work, she will not work in excess of 30 hours a week. She will be paid by the county clerk during her time there and by the fire board during her time there.
Very fortunate to have her in the background, because she did an exceptional job when she did that, fill in last year. So is there a motion to approve that resignation?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Joyce Harris Thacker, Upsher County Family Resource Network, announcing her resignation from the James W. Curry Library Board, effective immediately, and recommending the appointment of Lori Aldrich Harvey, the new Upsher County Family Resource Network Director, to fill the vacancy. Is there a motion to honor that request?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Carrie Wallace, Upsher County Administrator, requesting the amendment of the James W. Curry Advisory Board's appointments. The charge, excuse me, the change will only affect Joyce Harris Thacker's term, will bring the appointments in compliance with the Advisory Board bylaws. By way of background for public information, the current members of the James W. Curry Advisory Board, Library Board are Albert Lake, Devon Lake, Louis Simmons, pardon? Urban? No. Urban, Louis Simmons, Paul McGrew, of course Joyce Harris Thacker, who is resigning, Carrie Wallace, and Michael Quinn. The only term affected by this change is Joyce Harris Thacker's. Ms. Harris Thacker's previous appointment was to expire in 1231, 2019. A new job opportunity prevents her from retaining her position on the board, and we regret her leaving that board because she has served dedicately, not dedicately, she has served a dedication on that board, and of course is very active in many activities that board is civic organizations and the county, very appreciative of her service to that board. So having said that, is there approval of the request from County Administrator Wallace for that change?
So I would like to note that Lori Harvey's term will expire 1231, 2016.
So if they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Joe Melkon, Fire Board President, requesting the appointment of Tony Newman as part-time fire team clerk at the pay wage rate of $15 per hour effective October 5, 2015. Upon approval, Ms. Newman will work no more than average of 30 hours per week. And of course, the salary and benefits are reimbursed to the county by the fire board. She is not a county employee per se, but is compensated by the fire board. Is there a motion to approve her appointment?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. We have correspondence from Carrie L. Wallace, Upsher County Administrator, requesting the promotion of Carol J. Dean, Michelle Mackey, excuse me, and Doyle Cutwright II from E-911 Communication Center telecommunicators to E-911 Communication Center supervisors effective October 4, 2015. Interview Committee also requests these individuals receive a $1 an hour pay raise for additional responsibilities and a 50 cent raise to Cecilia Stewart, currently as a supervisor, who is compensated for additional 50 cents when she was previously promoted. Is there a motion to approve the request of the Interview Committee and Carrie Wallace, Upsher County Administrator?
Stand by, second.
If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. It is now 9:30, and we have scheduled Addie Helmuth with Women's Aid in Crisis to make presentation of a proclamation preparing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Good morning.
Do you need a copy? Do you have a copy of the document?
Yeah, I have one.
I'm here today to read the proclamation and ask County Commissioners to sign the proclamation and to keep October 2015 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence touches every one of us. It destroys families, and it takes away the peace and joy that home should reflect. Whereas... Whereas women are not the only targets, men, young children, and the elderly are also counted among the victims, and sadly, emotional scars are often permanent, whereas a coalition and organizations have emerged to directly confront this crisis. Law enforcement officials, those involved in shelters and outreach offices who are offering services, healthcare providers, the clergy, and other concerned citizens are helping in the effort to end domestic violence. We must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals, applaud their efforts, and increase public understanding of this problem. And I encourage everyone here and at home to do their part to end domestic violence. And I'm also asking county commissioners to permit Women's Aid Crisis to put out displays and activities throughout the community.
And downstairs would be?
Yes, in the lobby. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for representing this very important issue. It should be something that we as a community continue to be recognizing that it does occur all too unfortunately frequently. And I don't think there's an issue in the newspaper, either newspaper, that doesn't carry a story of some type of domestic violence or abuse, and that's, that's not something that we should be proud of, that we should work to eradicate. Is there a motion to approve the signing of the proclamation by the commission?
Send my second.
If they ever say aye.
Aye.
Those same, sign motion carries. So if you have your proclamation signed, we'll do that, and I presume you'll also have a photograph, continuing. We have items for your information. We have the Assessorship Kitbook of Compliance with the Walt Helmuth Commission of Agriculture regarding Donald W. Rice's completion of the Farm Census of 2015, satisfactorily complying with the requirements of the Farm Statistics Law and being eligible to receive compensation from the county court according to Chapter 7, Article 7, Section 6(c) of the New Code of West Virginia. We have a Federal Emergency Regulatory Commission, FERC, Office of Energy Projects, project update for the WB Express Project September 2015. And basically, the purpose of that correspondence is to provide the public in the commission, but also the public with the environmental review of the planned WB Express Project, to explain the federal emergency, excuse me, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, environmental review process, and then find issues and give you an idea of what's next in our process. And by looking down where we are, we're about halfway through the process relative to seeking FERC's approval for that pipeline, and they are at the point now where they are reviewing the applicant's draft resources, reports, and issues, and there is a public input opportunity which will be in the future on two occasions between now and the time that FERC would make its ultimate decision. So that was provided to us by, excuse me, by Office of Energy Projects. Next, we have Upsher County Sheriff's financial statement for current ending August 2015. We have a flyer for Hodgesville Lands Club event flyer, that's a pancake breakfast on October 10, 2015, of which I know Commissioner Cutright is a loyal lion at Hodgesville and look forward to having him serve me breakfast.
I'd like to invite everybody down to the pantry.
Right, and they're very good pancakes, and I think they often, and I think that, yes, I'd say I would invite them there as well. So I know that everybody will be there, Mr. Brady will be there as well, we always attend on Saturdays.
We'll be there.
We're always hungry in the morning on Saturdays.
And also, Brooks Hill has got a, this Friday, a social from 7 to 9.
Tomorrow?
Correct. Yes.
Let's see. The following, we have agendas and notices of meetings, we have meeting minutes, we have meetings, dates and times, and getting to boards that the commissioners as well as staff members attend during the month. They have appointments dated for upcoming boards, we have a vacancy on the fire board, though I understood at one point that we had a potential candidate for that first district community representative. And we have a Water Source Protection Committee county representative vacancy, that must be a PSD, a public service district board member or employee to serve on that committee. Next, regular meeting in the Upsher County Commission will be October 8, 2015, at 9:00 here at the commission chambers. That's all the official business, except we have a 1:30 and a 4:00 tour of the courthouse campus by various students and shift pre-students. Not too early to start them, I'm learning their civic responsibilities, so hopefully they won't wait till college before they come into the courtroom and courthouse to understand a little of the government. But we thank you for attending, and a word to your fellow classmates, we'd also welcome them, because that's how you learn about your civic responsibilities and how the government operates.